Okay, you're ready to roll, Dan.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The date is Monday, September 22, 2025. The time is 7:03 PM. This is a meeting of the Town of Warren's Planning Commission. Calling the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. First item on the agenda is, are there any agenda changes?
Anybody want to add or subtract anything with the table here?
I mean, I do have some MRVPD updates, but I see that we have updates. Those are already on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I have those under new and other. I usually put those, because that's kind of a housekeeping thing.
Yep, that's great. The next item, the next item on the agenda then is review and approve the previous minutes. And Ruth, you were able to make those, you know, I did ask you to make some changes and you were able to make those changes, correct?
I did, and that's what's in everybody's folder.
Okay.
It's also what I sent you with that change you wanted.
The nature of those changes were, the MRVPD just wanted to make it very clear with regard to the local options tax proposal, that they are not, slash, we are not spearheading that. It's really a decision for individual towns. They have, however, prepared a white paper on the, on sort of the benefits of an LOT. And if anyone from the, which has been sent to select boards around the valley, and if anyone from the Planning Commission is interested, I'm very happy to forward that on. Maybe I should just forward it on anyway. In fact, at the end of this meeting, I'll just forward that white paper on to everybody. So we have a motion to approve the minutes?
No. I, I did not do any, I did not say that I would contact Sugar Bush. Jim S will continue contacting Sugar Bush about this. I, I, I did not do that. And also, I, I spoke with Roots Builders and Jim C actually spoke with them, not me. So those are.
So was it, was it, was it the wrong gym?
Yeah, but not me. I, I never said anything about that I would talk to Sugar Bush.
Okay.
Not me.
Okay.
Adam, both Adam Z and I have said we would contact Sugar Bush. I did speak to Margot. She was at the MRVPD meeting and she, I spoke to her again and she apologized and said she was looking forward to talking to us, but did not have a specific date. So I don't know, Ruth, if you could put on as a follow-up item, maybe if you ask Margot and Jim. I've asked him about three or four times now. I don't know if, not Jim, Jim from Sugar Bush, I mean. And I'm sure they're really busy. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on, but if you could reach out and see if there's any date that worked for them, maybe if we start talking dates, they'd be willing to come. I know in theory, the idea of, they seemed interested in the idea, in theory, of housing at that garage.
When you're referring to Jim, you're talking about Jim Westell up at Sugar Bush?
Yes, Jim West.
Just want to make sure. We got a lot of gyms around here.
Yes, we do. Thank you for confirming. Any other corrections to the minutes? So where it says Jim Sanford, I would, yeah, feel free to put Adam and Dan in there.
Okay, I will do that and I'll let you guys make your motion at the next meeting.
There's one more thing you can add. I don't know whether this is an appropriate thing to do, but it might be good to have in the minutes, the public hearing, the next public hearings for the town garage.
Okay. And what is the date of that?
On September 24th, there is a public meeting, coffee and donuts at the garage, mostly for contractors. But anybody who wants to go to that would be good. I'm not gonna be here, so.
Okay.
On October 7th, there is a general public meeting at the town hall. And at that meeting, the select board will present the tax implications of the new garage. Finally, on October 30th, there is a public meeting, 5:30 PM at the town hall. That is a week before the November 4th bond vote.
What's the date on the October 7th one over at the town hall? The general one about the tax implications?
Public meeting at the town hall, 5:30.
5:30?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the one on the 30th is also 5:30?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so all the planning commission members know when these meetings are.
Okay, I'll incorporate that into the minutes so that that should help. Okay. All righty then.
Sorry, so we're gonna hold off on those meeting, those approving the minutes until next meeting? Okay. The next item on the agenda is Nikki Sabado or Sabado?
Come on up, Nikki.
That's Saturdays, right?
That is Saturday, yes.
Nikki Saturdays? Cool.
Nikki's a planner at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission and I'm excited to have her here.
Yes, I work, Nikki Sabado, I work for Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And I work specifically in community and land use planning with towns, municipal plan updates and bylaw assistance. So, so I'm here to give you just a brief overview of Act 181 and the tiered framework that has come out of this and just to give you a little intro to the statewide mapping methodology that we're using for the regional future land use map.
For the what?
For the regional future land use.
Okay.
And I don't know who you all are, so.
Okay, well, let's, why don't we introduce ourselves? I'm Jim Sanford. I've been a planning commissioner for a long time here.
Forever.
I'm Jim Kraft. I'm just kind of a new planning commissioner, just a year and a half or so into it. I'm Macon Phillips, Macon Phillips, and I'm in between, but a lot closer to Jim.
And Dan Raddick, of course, is our chairman who is on here at the moment. And Carol is our recording secretary and Aaron Shea will be on the agenda after you.
Okay, great. So, yes, I, I'll just, you know, how familiar are you with Act 181?
I'm not at all.
Not at all, okay. So it is Vermont legislation in 2024, passed Act 181. This updated Act 250, which is Vermont statewide land use permitting.
Why Vermont is so wonderful.
Now, which came first, the idea to make changes to Act 250? Or was the, was Act 181 kind of curculating along on its own anyways?
I believe it was a big land use reform bill, so it actually encompasses, encompasses a lot of different areas. But mainly, I'm going to talk about the, the future land use map and the tiered framework, so.
Do we have, do we have a picture of that map?
So, I did bring a little snippet of what the very early draft form is for Warren, but it's, it's not going to tell you a lot at this point. Brian Voight, who's our program manager, he, he's at another meeting right now. He might jump on later, but he's planning to have a draft for the towns to review and comment on by the end of November. So it's.
A map?
A map, yes. And so it, well, I'll, I'll give you the overview. And that's okay. And then afterwards, if you have more questions, so.
This is the thing meant to replace 250?
It's a revision to it, I guess. It's a reform, yeah. So, but it, so the Act 181 actually requires the regional planning commissions in the state to develop future land use maps as part of the regional planning process. Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, we're currently working on this update and an update to our regional plan. And we hope to submit to the land use review board, who has to approve this in early 2026. So we're meeting with towns now. We're trying to figure out which towns are actually wanting to opt into the tier one framework, which I'll go over. I don't know if that will apply to Warren, but we want to give you all the information so you know. So in this, this handout, I'm not going to go through it piece by piece, but just give you overview. So the tiered framework, so as I said, Act 250 jurisdiction was shifted from being size-based to location-based. So through this act, they developed three tiers. It's tier one, tier two, and tier three. Tier one is composed of tier one A and tier one B. Won't give you much detail, but these are areas with capacity for growth. You know, they have wastewater and sewer, water systems in place and are looking to grow, like your Montpelier and Berry potentially. Tier two, this is probably where, this is status quo and where Warren will, will be and any town that doesn't opt into tier one. Jurisdictional thresholds for tier two will remain the same. Municipalities can stay as a tier two and they follow similar Act 250, Act 250 review as always. It hasn't changed. And then tier three, this is, this is additional jurisdiction for critical natural resource areas. This tier is not based on our regional map. It is based on Agency of Natural Resources mapping. So those are the three tiers. So process considerations in general. Municipalities must demonstrate administrative capacity to implement their local regulations to be eligible for tier one A or tier one B. So tier one A, you would go straight to the state and apply for that. We don't have involvement in that. That's when a town's ready to take on all the permitting and, and review themselves. Tier one B, so these are areas around your village that potentially are areas for growth. So you would opt into our regional future land use map as a tier one B. But you would have to have a sign-off from your legislative body. That's why the select board should be aware of this. And, and they, that's, and you would have to have administrative and infrastructure capacity to do this. So most of the areas that were, that should accommodate the substantial portion of housing needed to meet these regional targets that have come out this past year in the housing needs assessment, these will be in your dense growth areas. So we don't expect that Warren will have a large housing target. So, and then with the intent of the statewide RPC mapping methodology, so that's what we're following as RPCs. This is what Brian, who's the program director, manager, will be following. So this is 11 RPCs around the state. They follow, it's a statewide delineation of future land use areas that are consistent. So they've developed a certain categorical delineation. BAFTA, which is the Vermont Association of Planning and Development Agencies, they recommend defining the core areas first. So sequencing the map development from the inside out. Basically, your, your, your dent, your village center, your downtowns, and then outwards. Okay, so in breaking the future land use areas into three sections, there's high-density growth areas, low to moderate density growth areas, and rural areas. So that first high-density centers and neighborhoods, not really a big concern, I don't think, here in Warren. Low to moderate density growth areas, that's the second section. That's, you know, transition and infill areas. These are areas of existing or planned commercial office or mixed use or residential development. They're generally adjacent to neighborhoods, or they can be standalone, but they must be served by water, wastewater, or have adequate soils to support a system.
Nikki, I'm sorry. Nikki, I'm sorry. Were you just talking about tier one B or tier two, the last sentence you were saying?
So the tiers are, are just, that's about Act 250 jurisdiction. So now I'm talking about the actual categories in the future land use mapping methodology.
But there has to be a way for them to kind of somewhat, you know, assimilate with one of the Act 250s, I would think, correct? One of the tiers, that the tiers, along with the, the land use areas, need to have some sort of connection. Maybe not in its entirety, but, because there may be some overlap, or a certain tier might be a little bit of high density and a little bit of low to moderate, and there may be things that, you know, or the low to moderate to the rural area.
They do overlap. It's, it is confusing. So that's why I was really kind of separating what the tier framework is and then the categories. I want to show you this one visual, because it might help you see the categories. I think I brought it.
Nikki, I'm sorry that, you know, I'm a little bit under the weather, which is why I'm not there, so I'm probably a little bit slow. I was still on the tiers and you've moved, you've moved on to categories. Okay.
Yes, so we're just, we're moving on. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the tiers aside from telling you what kind of jurisdiction is in with, in each tier framework. But now I'm talking about the, the mapping methodology, which is what we're, we're setting up to kind of see where areas capacity of growth in the region, essentially.
Okay, thank you. I understand now. Appreciate it.
So I, yeah, I'm just talking, now I'm talking about the low to moderate density growth areas. And the second one is resource-based recreation areas. And these are, this is your, your Sugar Bush area would be in this category. Then enterprise areas, I believe you have the airport. That was, that would be identified as enterprise.
And what does that mean?
So enterprise areas are just areas of high economic activity and employment.
Or the potential for.
Or the potential for, yes.
Okay. Yes, because with our new regulations, there will be a lot more that is, you know, possible up there.
Yeah.
That's cool. I live next to their airfield. That's my last.
To Warren International, I believe.
Yeah, I live, I live, I live just across the concourse from, from Dan. He was also near their airfield.
Nice. Yes, these, so enterprise areas are also natural resource extraction or industrial areas. So I don't know if that, if you have any in this area for that, but that's part of that category. And then hamlets is the final category. And so hamlets don't qualify for village center, not yet, but they could be an area for growth if, you know.
The reason that comes up, because I've had conversations about our four corners up here, and I think you and I had that conversation as well, of that being a potential hamlet, like a mini village. I mean, there are two corners that are strictly agriculture, but just the same, you know, there may be possibilities to at least have a mini hamlet of some sort, because it's, it is an intersection that has some activity already. It's got a town building up there, and we've got the East One Community Market in there. We've got the radio station there. And there's a group that is looking across the street from there to do some community-type development there.
Is, I assume there's no wastewater or community system, or, but potential for some kind of shared system?
Hi, Camilla. Nikki, just so you know, the person joining is Camilla Bay, former PC member and a current select board member.
Nikki, could you, do you have an example of a hamlet?
A hamlet. So actually, we're.
What's an example?
Well, I think four corners is considered a hamlet.
It could, but it isn't. I mean.
It actually is, well, I, with the original draft that Brian has made for the region, he has identified, I think that's. Well, he identified it.
As a potential anyways. These aren't, these aren't fine lines.
Clusters of economic activity, is that the idea?
Is what?
A hamlet? It's just like a?
A hamlet is just a small town with not, it's not even a town. It's a area not planned for significant growth. There might be a church. There might be, like.
Usually a church.
So it's, but there's, I think, and this is just from word of mouth and traveling around now, that hamlet was an important category, because this is where, like, rural towns could potentially grow and, and build housing. So, and so.
That's been on the radar for a while. You know, that intersection, it's, it's two, Sir Roxbury Gap roads, where a lot of people come into town. And it's, there's an opportunity there for something.
Well, they're developing it. I mean, yeah, some folks are stepping up.
There's a group that bought the property across the street and they want.
It's four acres and it's, and it's, yeah.
That's, that's where it's, right? Yeah, yeah.
And it's.
School bus stop there, you know. Market is there.
And then there's also like a bunch of cool buildings, I think, like just north of, or towards the mountain, East One Community Market, like all those, the farm and the outbuildings over there. There's just like a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, that's all. I should check that out. And so I'll just finish the categories. Now we're moving on to rural areas. So there's three categories, rural general, ag and forestry, and conservation. So your rural general, that is where it allows for low-density residential and some commercial development, but it must be compatible with productive lands and natural areas. Rural ag and forestry, you know, this is considered carefully managed development, which promotes working landscape and rural economy. And then finally, rural conservation, obviously areas of significant natural resources. And it's identified by the RPC and also municipalities based on the A and R mapping. So those are, those are the categories. There's more details of each one. If you really want to see what the criteria is to meet that category specifically for a, like a village area, because that would be an area potentially for growth outside of your village center here.
So, and maybe I'm just missing this, but what's the, what's the incentive? You know, like, so there's all these criteria, and so like, if you qualify, and like, you know, but like.
Yeah.
Why would you want, want to? What's the benefit of being in a tier one versus a tier two?
Well, at tier one, you have Act 250 exemption from tier one A, potentially in your growth areas. Tier one B, you have an exemption from Act 250 of up to 50 units of housing.
Great.
So that, that's the benefit, that's one of the benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, I just, I appreciate your assumption that we don't want to be in the tier one.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm very interested in growth, but there's also a project here potentially that would be more housing. So it's just interesting to think about Warren with its infrastructure and all of that.
Yeah.
But maybe he just wouldn't even qualify on the merits. I was just curious, like, what the, what the argument for trying to be in it would be, but.
Yeah, and if you have capacity administratively, then that would be something to consider.
We do, and this, we've been doing, we don't have any formal feasibility space just yet, but we've been looking into them, you know, grant money, you know, that nature. As a matter of fact, we've got one that we've got with you guys, I believe, that Sam has done. Sam Robinson, I know he was looking into and talking to somebody about getting Brownsfield, which you guys did for us back in 2008, I think it was, and for our, but it's currently our town during our campaign. And once they vacate, you know, you want to know what's there and what we can do and can't do from the Brownsfield standpoint. We pass.
Yeah, when someone, I forget who it was, maybe it was Christian, spoke to the, to the Matter Valley Planning District about it. It didn't sound like we look like a tier one town. Maybe it was, maybe he just meant, I mean, in his, and maybe this is where you started off, I thought, saying like, tier one, or at least tier one A was probably like a Barry or Montpelier, like a very developed, by Vermont standards, a very developed area. And we, it's sort of, we fit sort of naturally in tier two, but is, to Macon's point, is there a way that we could, you know, if we wanted, if we were considering or interested in larger-scale housing projects, could, is there a way to crawl, to claw our way into tier one B? Or is that, you know, is that, if you look at Warren, is Warren never gonna be there? I just don't know enough to, 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 to understand.
Yeah.
Well, I, I assume that if you're going to be exempt from Act 250, you still need all this, all the experts, the staff, the resources to act as Act 250 as a town.
Right.
Right? I mean, so, okay, how many, how many civil engineers do we do, are on our staff? How many, you know, forestry engineers do we have? And so somehow you have to be staffed for it. It sounds like, I mean, I mean, there's no way you're just gonna be exempt from Act 250. I mean, you're still gonna have to cover all the, the fit and form of the act.
Well, and it's, for instance, like, your zoning regulations would have to be eligible, would have to meet the criteria to be eligible for a tier one. But, so tier one B, which is more likely, if you wanted to go for it, there are other towns that are.
It's under 50, though, so.
Up, yeah, up to 50.
Up to 50.
For one.
That exempts us from one project.
Irisville.
Waitsfield.
Yes.
Would be a one.
Tier, tier one B.
Yes.
You know.
I mean, even.
Once, if they get their, if they get their wastewater thing done, then they'll have the infrastructure there and 50 units of housing go in Irisville in a nanosecond.
Right, if they want it, yeah.
I think they do.
Yeah, we haven't met with, we told yet, but.
Well, you gotta meet with those guys, because Irisville is a real commercial center of the whole valley.
That's right.
You know, everybody shops there and what do you go.
They've got sidewalks as far as being able to move around pedestrian-wise, is, you know, you know.
They do, yeah.
And tier one B, the state is still developing these guidelines. So, you know, Brian, I've heard him say, you know, let some other towns go for it first, see how it, how it pans out for them. If you're not ready to opt in yet, it's, it's, I think towns are, are going to start thinking more about it in the next month or so. If they don't opt in this time around, there's time next year later. It's not a one-time deal.
That's good enough. So the advantage of doing this is that some of the, some of the things are relaxed. Some of the Act 250 things are relaxed, so it makes it easier to develop those places?
In, in those tier ones, yes. So that threshold will be higher. And then, of course, tier three, your threshold's lower. You could still develop in tier three, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, let me ask you something, and I was gonna, I've been holding off on saying this, but with the governor's executive order regarding kind of loosening things up when it comes to conservation, it's gonna be, I'm not gonna ask, it's gonna be interesting to see how that works with all the work that's being done now.
Right, yes.
I'm just gonna leave it, because I don't think anybody really knows the specifics of that as to how it's going to work and how it's going to impact us.
Right. And the other thing to note is that this future land use map does not replace your zoning.
No, I knew that.
And not in your future land use map for your own town is still its own map that you would follow. So this, you know, on top of developing this map, this is in tandem with the regional housing targets that we're trying to, to set. And it's not that you have, you're required to meet them, but it's, it's part of the planning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. And we have to see where there is actual capacity.
Yeah.
But we, we want input from towns, and when this draft becomes available, and we'll have it online as an interactive map as well, we encourage feedback and we'll, we'll be notifying towns.
You can take that map and overlay it on, on our land, new, brand-new land use development regulations. And I think you'll find out that they're pretty damn similar.
Yeah, on the map, yeah. And they have, they already have a copy of that map.
They do?
Yes, because they made the corrections I needed to make.
Yeah, so you guys know what's going on.
Yes, and you recently did a big bylaw update, didn't you?
It's, we're getting closer every week. We're getting closer every week.
They're like, do you know anything? I'm like, I don't know. I know, we talked about it.
Yeah, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. How bright it is, I don't know, but it is lit.
Right.
We're close.
Yes.
Okay.
But we've been close before.
We're crossing D's and dotting I's, I think, at this point.
Legally.
This is gonna be awesome. We're gonna celebrate the looters at the town garage. It should be like an epic, like two, the two white whales just meet. It should be like an epic, like two, the two white whales just meet.
Yeah. That would be a party.
Yes.
Um, is there any other questions or?
Do you guys have a gist of what this is all about?
I do. I, 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 I think, I think this is pretty good. Like I say, this map, if it's informed by our map, we love it.
Right.
You know, I, I, it'd be interesting to see if there's any discrepancies in what you guys have provided and what we're intending on our map.
Is that your, that's your land use regulation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And this is your, this is, I pulled your future land use map from your last update, so it's.
Our last updated two thousand and six?
This is twenty nineteen.
Okay.
This is your town plan update.
Oh, that's town.
So, and that's what I work with too, with towns, so if there, your next update, your land use objectives, you know, you can revisit that and see if any have changed.
Yeah.
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 That's, but no, this is really, we're, um, I know we're looking at this and other capacity mapping.
Okay.
But yes, land use regulation certainly.
Yeah, well, the one that, that Brian fixed for me is that one over there.
Yeah, he wasn't sure if he wanted a print tonight, but he thought he'd already given one.
He needs to take draft off. He wants me to do one other thing to it, which is not gonna happen right now. So.
Could I ask another question? I, you know, I lost, um, I lost the signal for a minute, so I kind of got bumped out of Zoom, and so I may have missed something. But as far as advising our select board um, on Act one eighty-one and upcoming changes, are there particular deadlines that we, or particular decision points we need to hit and by when? And apologies if you covered this and I was knocked out of the conversation.
No, that's a, a good question. I, I did mention, um, we are hoping to, we are planning to have a draft map ready by the end of November. Um, we're giving towns till, I think it's December ninth, to opt in to the tier one B. Um, if they want to make it onto the, the map requests that we're taking to the state in January or early twenty twenty-six. So again, this isn't a one time deal, um, and a lot of towns won't be ready to opt in.
And we're not tier one.
To tier one B.
Not tier one A, we'll be, uh, back here.
I mean, maybe not yet, you know, so.
But when we, when you said the draft map is gonna be at the end of November, will we have?
So, yes.
Will we be able to see anything before that as far as giving feedback or not?
Um.
In other words, are, will we be able to give feedback before you finish the draft or not?
It's, Brian is.
I know he's.
Yeah, he's not, I, I, I mean, the map that we have currently, it's still so infinite, like he's working on it now.
Yeah.
But I think it's not really gonna be that different to what you're expecting it to be.
Okay, so we just really need to have a blow up so that we can see what this initial one is, knowing that it's not put in stone yet, but it's gonna be, if it's, if it's any different, it's just going
Yeah.
to be, you know, tweaking here and there.
Exactly, and, and it's, and the other thing, um.
That's better than nothing.
If there are landowners, um, that you know would want to be notified of certain parcel boundaries, that's something else that Brian can reach out to them if they, um.
As to how their property would be affected by what you're doing on this.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And so, so that's the deadline is, um.
That's your, that's your deadline.
Our deadline, December ninth for opt into tier one B. So the, the select boards role, they have no action to take currently, but if you wanted to opt in an area to tier one B, they would have to sign off on that. Um, they'd have to have a signed resolution and.
But we would have an option twelve months later to do that, if we don't do it this year.
That's right.
Okay.
And other.
And I just, I just wanna, so, sorry to hammer on this point, Nikki, but, um, sort of like, as a gut feeling, it, I, I just want to make sure. Are my correct in understanding that we're sort of a, we're not a shoe-in for tier one B? We're sort of fitting more naturally in tier two, to your eyes? Is that correct? Or, or do we, are you seeing that there, you know, cuz if we were a tier one B eligible or, or resembles, you know, I guess we could try to put on a hard push. We don't, you know, it's not like the select board doesn't have anything else on its plate, or the same with the planning commission. So I, well, that's what, that's what I'm thinking. I, I, it doesn't seem like there's.
Seems to me like this is sort, it's, it seems to me the sort of thing you do as part of doing the garage or another project, if it like starts getting traction, then you're like, maybe that works out. Um, you know, that, but it's not something you just do, to do.
And.
So that's a good point. Would we, do we think there are any advantages, uh, for the town garage if we were?
Yeah, that's.
For the garage or for the, what we might do with?
Both, both. Well, I mean, I was thinking the, the old site, the, the site that comes open for housing.
Yeah.
It's like, maybe as part of that, it's like, oh, and we'll opt into the thing and duh, 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 duh. But actually, maybe, were you talking about the new?
I'm talking about, okay, well, what happens around traffic and things like that, and all of a sudden you're tier one B and you do it this way. And you kind of have self-control versus waiting for, you know, V trans or something like that. Uh, I don't know, I, I, I don't know. That's, that's the question I would ask is.
Well, I will, as far as timing, if we're just talking about what we want to do once that's vacated up the street.
That's what we're saying.
If that's what you're talking about, based on what I've read about what's happening with the town garage ideally, that hopefully they could start in the spring of twenty-six.
So we're not talking.
And then, and then that's not gonna be available until twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So we could, if we thought that really made a match to a tier one B, we would have the ability to do it.
I'm, I'm prepared to be.
Next year.
At a town meeting in twenty years, telling some jackass that just moved here, how he doesn't even know how long I've been working on this. So I'm, I'm with you.
Have the words ringing in your ears.
Yeah, I know, I'm getting it.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, in an ideal situation, but I just, I guess what I'm trying to say is that project to me, I think, really would fall into a, a.
Totally.
This is, yeah.
And it doesn't seem like a, I mean, I guess what I was getting at is it doesn't seem like a realistic timeframe, unless it was absolutely essential we move now. And it doesn't sound like it's absolutely essential we move now.
Not, not unless you're really, um, like shovel ready, or you're really trying to build housing quick, so.
We're, we are not there.
You're not.
We are not there.
Right.
We got a lot of fish to fry before that happens.
Yes, and I think that's wise. I wouldn't advise pushing forward.
It's all good.
Yeah. Um, but there is time and also to see what other towns are doing with this tier one B.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll let somebody else be the.
Yeah, so.
Great.
Yeah.
It's a really cool project.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming to explain.
Yeah, no, I'm glad, I'm always happy to come in person, cuz I haven't met everyone.
We like.
Good, good. And Brian would have been here, but he had to be in East Montpelier, and it's funny, cuz he lives closer to here, and I live closer to East Montpelier. He's small.
Yeah, well, tell him we missed him, and, um, we'll, we'll be in touch.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for having me. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay, would you like to keep this?
Sure.
That'd be great.
All right.
Okay, now.
Sorry. Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Does anybody have a, a vehicle charging in the, the EV?
I saw the vehicle with the taillights are going up like a thing.
And everything's blinking and, and it has no plates on it, no actual plates on it.
Oh, cool.
So Jeff.
Yeah, it's tier one B. That's a tier one B problem.
Again, Nikki. Okay, Aaron Shay, would you like to come forward and unmute yourself? I know you're there somewhere.
Well, I'm here.
All right, good evening. Um, I, can you see the rest of us so we can, I can introduce everybody?
Yep.
Um, everybody speak up and say hello to, to Aaron Shay.
Hi.
Jim Sanford, um, Camilla Bay, who is also a select board member. Um, and Macon.
Phillips.
Phillips over here, and Jim Crafts. And Dan, who's next to you here on the screen.
Hello, Dan.
Who is our PC chairman. And.
Nice to see you again.
Um, just as a preface, um, Aaron had gotten in touch with me several weeks ago because he had a couple projects come to him that he was interested in looking at, but he knew nothing about Warren. He's done a lot of work in Waitsfield and, and many other places. Too numerous to talk about, um, cuz he's busy everywhere. And so I had a wonderful conversation with him, and the way in which he was talking about how he develops housing, I just thought it would be really good for him to have a conversation with you all, especially with what we're thinking about on the former, soon to be former, hopefully, um, town garage space. So I'm now turning it over to you, Aaron.
Well, why don't, can I, can let me jump in a second before you turn it over? So it sounds, so Aaron, I've, I've heard your name around, around town as someone who's actually doing, doing work. I think as the planning commission, just so you know, you know, you, as Ruth has explained, Warren is heading towards a bond vote to move our town garage, uh, you know, out from inside the village next to the elementary school to an adjacent site. And as I'm sure Ruth has said, that leaves the town garage site open as really what we viewed for a long time as a great location for, for housing. Um, but we're not, you know, the problem, one of the, you know, we are not housing developers. Um, certainly not the PC and not the select board either. And we've spoken, you know, we're, we've, uh, sort of at the select board's request, we've been talking to various folks and trying to figure out what's, how would we go about, like, what would be a successful way to partner or engage a developer who is interested in developing workforce housing? Um, we've talked, spoke to like a down street and heard their model of a one big building, possibly maybe more, but you know, a rental model. Um, we've talked to Matt Rude, who shared his experiences and, and was really very bullish or very positive on the idea, what, you know, sort of like what a great site for, for housing. Uh, he thought private developers would be champion, chomping at the bit. So I, you know, I think all of us are sort of curious, as someone who's done, done that sort of good work in, in the area nearby, like what's, like, what do you think? This is maybe a naive way to put it. What do you think about the site? Would it interest you? How would you go about it? What would you be looking for? Those were the kind of questions I had in mind.
Um, well, just kind of for me, I, and I apologize for not being there. I really wanted to be there in person, but I ended up having to go, I was in the valley this morning. I had to go to St. John'sbury this afternoon, and I didn't have the time or heart to, uh, make it back across the state. Uh, but, um, probably the easiest way for me to answer that is just kind of in generality about the way that I view construction and some of the challenges that I see and, um, some of the things I've come across, um, you know, this new executive order on housing, I've have some opinions on that too, but, um, you know, I, um, just, when we, when we started, the first property that we bought in Waitsfield, our intent was to do twenty-six um, workforce housing units. And we reached out to the state and we kind of went through, we were gonna do affordable housing and um, by the time I got to like my third or fourth meeting and interviewed a few people, they kind of made it clear, like, you have to have a certain model to, as a business, to do it and to work with the state, and it, to be very honest, they just don't move at the pace that I move. Um, I don't have the patience for it. I am, I don't really have the gut for it to sit and, you know, and I, I'm, um, it's just not, I'm not a, I don't have time for that emotionally. Um, and so, you know, what we've kind of have done is, um, we do offsite construction, so we can do a lot of stuff really fast. Um, and done at a really high quality. We, everything we build is something I would live in. Um, and, you know, when I talk to the state about a lot of the affordable housing models and things like that, um, I, I wasn't real keen on, um, kind of the way, the, the houses that were being presented and, you know, it's a, this is a huge problem all over the world, not just here, so, you know, the, the cost of goods and the cost of construction has gotten, like, even since we've started, like, has, has like doubled. Um, so, you know, we saw a gap in the market where we want to build homes that are nice, that people could live in, but could afford them. So, um, that's kind of what our model is. Um, and so, you know, to answer the question, something like this is right up our alley. Um, I think, Dan, I actually met you at a planning commission meeting for the Mad River Planning Commission, and one of the discussions was, I think it was Don Simonini was like, we need to give them money, we need to give them money, and I'm like, I, I actually don't want money, just give me a place to build. Um, so, you know, and now the price of land has come down quite a bit since then because people can't afford to build. So, um, you know, I, we have a few projects going on right now, and as Ruth said, we had two kind of come to our attention in Warren, and I just wanted to, uh, you know, introduce myself there and, you know, uh, just kind of be a little bit more of a known quantity. So, you know, we generally like to do things that are unique and interesting, but our whole thing is like, you know, our, our, we, we do everything custom. So we're doing custom home, but they're all built off site, and we kind of started around three fifty a square foot for our build out where, you know, most of the prices in the valley are probably in the six fifty range. I don't know exactly where they are right now. I've heard a range from five hundred to eight fifty, but obviously that depends on a lot of other things. Um, but the big thing for me that I've come across is because I, my background is, I'm an engineer. I built wastewater plants. I've lived in twenty states and two countries, building water and wastewater plants. And it's ironic that now I'm developing in a state that has a huge shortage of them. So it's, one of the biggest problems that I've come across is, you know, people, it's like, okay, let's just say it's four hundred dollars a square foot to build a house. That's for the sticks and the bricks. Like, the problem is you have to buy the land before that. And then you have to, you know, depending on where you live, you have to get either drill a well or put in a septic tank or do these other things. And so now all of a sudden to get a thousand square foot house, you're spending six hundred grand, and it's like, huh? Like, this doesn't, the, the math doesn't math. So we've kind of changed the way we approach, you know, the development sites that we want to do um, to try and keep the pricing under control. Um, and we kind of, we also have levels of what we can build to kind of gear towards different, um, price points. Um, so, you know, the, the, the fun part for us about, and what we really like is a lot of the work is done in a factory, um, which keeps it very square, but what it does is it allows us to get a lot of things done in parallel, and it keeps the weather out of the game. So, you know, we just started working, whoever's, you know, driven down there, we put in five houses last week. Um, and so, you know, now we've probably got six or eight weeks to, to finish all five of those houses, but it just, it enables you to keep things moving, um, and get a lot done fairly quickly. And, you know, that keeps those, those costs down, uh, significantly. So that's kind of what our model is. Um, you know, when I talked to Ruth, I said, I, I love problem solving and things like that, like, you know, the, the town of Waitsfield has, they own a quarry, and I went to them and I said, hey, cut off this thirteen acres and I'll build fifteen homes and we'll keep them all under one twenty AMI, and, you know, I have a whole, I worked with my lawyer and we put together a way to do that. Um, but, um, you know, there's, there's, there's just kind of a lot of, there, there's a lot of pieces to it and, um, you know, we want to be a part of the solution. That's why we kind of are trying to expand, talk to different people. Um, but yeah, I mean, my, my feeling is Act two fifty is the, the hardest part of any of it. Um, we've gone through Act two fifty twice, um, and I haven't enjoyed it either time. Um, and, um, you know, the, the amount of money that, that goes into it is, uh, I'm, I I think it was a really, really well-intentioned act that, uh, needs more than a couple of modifications. Um, but, you know, that's neither here nor there. I'm not gonna change that anytime soon. Um, but yeah, I don't, I had another thing I was gonna say, and it.
Oh, I should, I should just mention, uh, you know, funny enough, the previous, the previous presenter was giving us an option. It's worth noting, you know, like all these tier ones, so as you're thinking about Waitsfield and all of this, you know, the ability to opt out of Act two fifty is pretty exciting.
Um, yeah, it, it is, and it's, I, I kind of get, I get, I kind of get pushed and pulled on it though, because I lived in Toronto for twelve years, and I see what it's like when you don't control it. And so it's great to change these rules when you have responsible contractors, but when you don't, it's, it's, I, I, I have mixed feelings about it. It's, it's, I, I, I have mixed feelings about it because I am an environmentalist and I kind of struggle. So I love the cluster model housing, um. For, for a location like you guys have, and I, I think I've got the right spot. It's kind of next to the school with the sand pit.
Yeah.
Waste water is already here.
Yeah. Exactly, which is the, that's the biggest deal. I can drill wells anywhere and I can do, you know, centralized wells. Wastewater is far more important than water. Um, but, you know, kind of talking about your model that you had mentioned, Dan, about what's, what's a better way to do? Things, um. It, I, I can go down a rabbit hole because we all have our own views, but, um, I'm really fussy about, I would never build something that I wouldn't live in myself. Um, so, you know, I, I like having step affordable housing, step housing that's affordable. Like where, um, it's a yes and. So, yeah, maybe on one portion of the property. You put a three story building that has a dozen apartments, but that's great. But then you, like, what happens when somebody outgrows that? Okay, let's put a couple of duplexes or triplexes or townhomes. In a similar area so that as people kind of get their feet under them, they have a place to live, you know? And again, it also depends on what the intention is. If we're just trying to find housing for, you know, uh, for, for. So that people can live in the community, which is obviously really important. Um. You know, I just think having a variety is really important. Um, you know, I think like half. It was a crazy number. I read an article recently and it was like. Half the renters in the state were single individuals, which surprised me because I was always like, build houses, build houses. And then it's like. You know, kind of where we've settled where if, if we're designing a, a community like that, it would be a little bit of each, um. Just we, we have a, I talked to Sugar Bush a lot and that's, that's their hardest thing. They can find bodies, they can find places to rest bodies, but they're like. Wait, now what do we do with our managers with, and, and our, you know, our, our, our year round employees who have multiple. Kids or what have you. So I like the idea of, you know, getting as much as you can out of it. And being that you have the wastewater right there, you know, you could really, um, you could get a, you could get a lot of bang for your buck verbally. For, uh, you know, the, the capacity that way and kind of scratch a couple of different itches, I think. Um, I like more of a blended approach just because, um, you know, otherwise it kind of. An apartment, you can get a lot of people, but then it's like an apartment building. And I think that that kind of loses a little bit of charm, but that's just my own personal opinion. I'm not here to. Tell anybody what to do. I just like the, the idea of a community and. And people can have a place for their kids. But again, now I'm giving you my opinions, which, you know, don't really matter, but. That's just my, you know, that's my.
Well, I'm going to ask one more question and then let, and then let, then turn it over to my fellow board members. But my question, I mean, what you're saying sounds really, um, appealing and interesting. I mean. We, we would like, you know, we would love to see workforce and perhaps a range of housing. You know, sounds like I think in a lot of people's visions, um. You know, uh, we don't want to see, at least my, my vision, and I don't think the vision of the planning commission is. We would prefer not to see that whole area convert to short term rentals. After, you know, after a cycle. So how you stop that from happening as a town?
Got it figured out.
Yeah, but it's, I guess it would be like, what do we do? My question is really kind of ambiguous. What do we do to entice you to engage with us? And figure out, okay, Aaron said some really cool things. It sounds like it's lining up with us. How do we get, like, how do we, if, you know, is he really interested? And if so, how do we? How do we start a serious discussion?
I mean, it's totally up to you guys. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't interested. I mean, like I said. I mean, the, the reality is, like, I could go, and I have this conversation with JB Weir, like every week. I actually care quite a bit about the community of the Mad River Valley, all three of the, uh, building areas in the, in the community. And I think that, you know, in order to protect any investment that I have in the community, we have to have a place for people to live. So. Yeah, like, there's days where I get frustrated. I'm like, the hell with it. I'm going to go buy a lot in stove for eight hundred grand, subdivide it, make a bunch of money and move on. Um, that's just not our model and it's not our plan. Um, we want longevity and we want to be able to. Sleep at night knowing i- i- if, if you can't make money selling a house for four hundred dollars a square foot. Um, I, I. I, I, I don't know what to say. Um, but, you know, building materials have gone up. I. What I'll just say is, is that, you know, I'd rather build twenty homes a year that people can afford to live in. Than five and make a bunch of money. Um, and it's just, I, somebody has to do that. And I'm not like, I, I'm not going to sit here and pretend like, it's like, oh, I'm just going to give things away. I'm not. I mean, I'm in it to make money, but. I don't need to make it all at once. I'm, I'm, you know, and so. My brother and I had a long conversation about that and about kind of what our model was going to be. And we had the conversation. We're like. Let's go to stove, let's buy this fifty acre parcel, we'll cut it into ten lots, we'll build a couple of homes and we'll frigging retire. Cause you could do that. It's, it's the, the returns are just different per square foot because of the land value. But it's just not the way we want to operate. We, we like the valley. We want to continue to be a positive part of the community. And so. Um, you know, the answer is just tell, I, I'm, I'm happy to come chat anytime. I mean, we, we have, and. You know, part of it, I, I'd kind of answer your question with a question. It's really up to you. Um, we're interested, we want to engage, we're growing. Um, we're in the process of expanding, getting a couple of new managers. Who I know and trust really well. Um, so, you know. Like the town of Waitsfield now is pushing ahead with the suggestion I had had last year. And they're like, well, you just need to know that we can't just like give it to you. We have to put it out to tender and like. I'm like, I'm not helping, like, because I think you're going to give me a bunch of work. I'm helping because it needs to be done. And if I need to bid against somebody, I'll bid against somebody. I don't care. Um, you know, I, I, I would challenge anybody to, to. To touch our timeframes, um, but, um, you know, that's, that's where we're at. And I mean, I'm like, we just want to be. You know, the more I get built, the, the, you know, the more established my business gets and, and it. It also helps the investments that I have in the community. I mean, that's my answer to that, I guess. Um, but, you know, I want to make money on every job, but not all of it. On one job.
Dan, Camilla had her hand up.
Um, yes, please. I'm done. I'm done with my questions. I encourage the rest of the planning commission to, um, to, uh, to pepper Aaron.
Yeah, that I just want to kind of circle back because you, you've mentioned it a couple of times, um, and I remember reading about. You're in discussions last year or a while, or two ago about with Waitsfield. Um, and I wondered if you might share a little bit more. My recollection was something along the lines of you were. Maybe asking for, I don't know. That the land donated or I, I, what, what was?
Yeah, totally. I'm, I'm, so, so I'll go back again, just really, really fast because I can talk. So. You know, raise your hand and be like, stop, we're done. Um. But when we, when my brother and I first had that farm, we were going to convert it. We really wanted to do workforce housing. And so we had that, the parcel where we are just building homes right now. We had that designed to put in twenty six homes. Um, we did a full septic design and it was a shared septic system and. And so we had all that done. And then as we went, we were like, okay, we're not doing that. We got into the project that we're in right now. And I noticed that the town quarry was adjacent to our parcel. And I was like, oh, I have septic capacity here for twenty six homes already designed. If you guys give me that plot of land, you know, and I, I'd be happy to build on it. I did. Some, some rough numbers and, you know, the, the math was all based on one twenty AMI for affordability. And to be honest. I, I still think that it's pretty skewed, that number is pretty skewed because I think we have a gap between. Uh, you know, our mean income is a little skewed by, by our uppers and our lowers, I'll just say, um. So, you know, to say that a, an affordable home or, or the workforce home. In, um, I'm, I'm not as familiar with Warren again, but in Waitsfield, it was like four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And I'm like, man, that's affordable housing. I'm like, I, I don't really know what to say about, like, that's, that's, you know, so. We started that process and then they asked me that question. They said, hey, well, why would we give the land to you? Like versus other contractors. And I said, go ahead. I don't, I don't, I don't care. It's, you know, it's, there's, there's, we're not talking about. You know, making a ton of money here, but all that I, I explained, I said, if you need to put it out to tender, put it out to tender and I don't have any issue with that. But I said, if you're going to sell the land, then there's no chance that anybody's going to be able to build. At any kind of, you know, and, and keep it at those rates, which was, you know, I, I made a comment tongue in cheek about you can't make money at four hundred dollars. But the reality is, you know, you, you can, you can spend a lot of money building a house, as I'm sure you all know, and it can get high. Based on finishes. I was really referring to just.
They usually aren't.
With that.
So they usually aren't in quarries.
Is there some sort of? Would there be some sort of agreement then if the, if the town gave you land, you have some commitment to?
The, the way I've seen this done in the past, I've done a lot of research on it. I wish I, more than I wish I had frankly, but. Um, the, the vehicle that I've seen kind of used around the country is like selling it to you for a dollar. And you have some amount of time to develop it and do what your commitment is. And if you don't, you pay back the tax dollars on it, plus, plus, plus. So there's. There's a vehicle to where if you run into something, you know, there's obviously a lot of things that can change throughout, but that's kind of. The, the, the crux that I've seen is you give me the land, I have to do X amount by this date. If not, I owe you back taxes. And, you know, we, we reevaluate at that point, depending on why it didn't get done, obviously. But the intention is to make sure that it's not because you're not losing the attention of your contractor. Um, which is, that, that's the vehicle that I've seen used most typically. Um, but like I said, we're. We're very, very flexible. So, you know, I think you guys would, would have a trickier time. You know, finding a good vehicle on your end than mine, um, just being municipal money. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, um, I have, I had a, a question. I mean, a lot of questions. I, I think the, the, the larger, uh, town. Garage project, I mean, we, we can all talk about, um, I actually have a, a different one, um. Uh, one of the goals of the revision of the, uh, land use development regulations. Um, was to make it easier for people to build, uh, accessory dwelling units. And, um, that feels like a really interesting space for your solution, given that. People already own the land and it's really the, the thing that's preventing people from building rentable ADUs is. Um, building them. And so I'm curious if you looked at not just the like multi-unit, but the like. Mini singles to get housing through the ADU side versus sort of the big. Multi-unit projects.
Yeah. So last year I met with the city of Newport. They asked me for a model. They have a site there that they want to build a bunch of small homes. So the short answer is yes. I mean, we can build. Our smallest unit is four hundred square feet. Um, and we go up to, I mean, I, I priced up a twelve thousand square foot house. Six months ago, so we can do just about anything. Um, we have a bunch of, I probably have thirty or forty different. You know, six hundred to twelve hundred square foot, you know, modest homes. They're not tiny, they're bigger, but. Um, we have a bunch of footprints, um, and a bunch of designs for that. Um, that would kind of fit exactly what you're referring to. And I mean. The, the only thing that I, again, I'm gonna, I'm an opinionated, uh, person and you, you'll hear that. And, and you'll hear it in what I'm about to say. But I know a lot of people who built ADUs utilizing that and they're all short term renting them.
Totally. Oh, absolutely. But I like your, I'm like, I'll take a covenant. We'll just take, we can do whatever, you know, I think that there's ways to incentivize it. But I, I think that, that the truth is like, there's still just like a lot of land that people own. And I think even more like sun common for affordable housing, where it's really a finance question. Not, and, and a sort of implementation, like I, if you told me tomorrow that I could pay seven hundred bucks a month or. Not seven hundred, be probably three thousand dollars a month, but whatever. And all of the details are taken care of and in two years there'll be an ADU, like that would be great, you know?
Yep. Um, there's a way to do it. It, there's definitely a way to do it. It just requires some thought and it requires the attention, like. When we, I had my lawyer put together a document for the ones that we were building. That had a lot of detail in it to ensure that the people who were buying it were people who needed. To buy it. We made sure that the, that the rate at which they buy it for is held in perpetuity. So they can't buy it and then flip it in a year for double the price. And we also restricted it with STRs being, you, you can't rent it for less than six months.
Yeah, exactly.
So there, there's vehicles to do it. And I mean, six months might be too long. I, I don't know. I mean, I've had thoughts where I'm like, hey, if I put two of those affordable units on the same property and somebody buys it for three hundred and eighty grand. They can rent one of them as a short term rental and, you know, it can be a passive income to help them. I, I've gone, I've gone in a whole circle around this and I don't know how I feel anymore. I, I, I'm, I'm spun. Um.
That's fair. Well, I appreciate it.
Definitely do that. My, my only, my reservation on the ADU thing is, is just. Um. You know, I, yeah, I, it doesn't matter.
I think you put your nail, your, 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 you, you put your finger on it, which is it, it, it takes a little bit more thought to. Take advantage of the ADU opportunity to create real housing and avoid some of these things. So, we can talk about that in the future.
I, I love the idea of doing what you started, what like, what I think I heard you start to say, which is incentivizing people. So that, hey, you build a, you build an ADU and you long-term rent it for five years and you get tax credits. Or something that can cover the delta between what you would have gotten as a short term renter. I can tell you that I've gotten rid of. A lot of my rental properties because they're, you know, a lot more work than they're worth. Um. But, you know, I think that a lot of people who, you know, who, who don't have a ton of disposable income, but could. You know, potentially get a bank loan or something like that to, to do an ADU. If you, if there was some good language around it. Um, you know, I think it could be really beneficial, but I'm, I'm in way over my, uh, my britches now. Um, I just build houses.
Now, refresh my memory because I know we had a long conversation and a lot took place. Do you do primarily rentals or for sale, or do you mix them along with some of the step housing kind of thing?
Um, we, we started our business with the intent of owning several properties and doing rentals. Um, and to be very honest, um, you know, this is going to go back, make and do exactly what we were just talking about. We don't want to rent. I don't want to deal with tenants. I mean, the landlord laws in this state are, are tough to say the least.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, like, we have, we have a lease that we've given to forty tenants that I would never sign. Like we basically, if they're two days late on their first month, we start the eviction process. It's all things we would never do. But it's like what you have to do to protect yourself. So, a- again, like I, I'm not trying to get myself to. Out, but like, I, I think that is a bigger problem. Because I'd rather have a short term relationship with a renter, like, hey, come for a weekend. I'll clean up after you. Now get out.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, I, you know, when somebody's there for a certain amount of time. And again, I'm not trying to. It's, it's, it's really tricky. It really is.
Well, I mean. Uh, to, to jump it again, I was going to say that, um, Ruth, you know, that's the, I mean. The town's not going to manage renters. Aaron's not going to manage renters. It, you know, it's the down, that's the downstreet model. You bring, you bring in and they manage the, you know, they have the institutional capacity. I, I think. From what, from what we've heard, I think it is sort of like. Much more of a partner with a builder. To, and then the units would be for sale with. Conditions attached that we can mutually agree to so that we really are serving. For the most part, workforce housing, but you know, perhaps you have to build a more expensive house to off, you know, on the side. I mean, there's. You know, that's not my, my bailiwick at like, but I like that the tiered housing model offers. You know, that's not the first time we've heard that idea that you can have a variety of housing. Uh, that seems, that seems to make sense. Anyway, I'm sorry to jump in again. I said I wouldn't.
Um, that's, but we want, we want ownership as the, being the primary dwelling for these folks. So that it's not the second home, that it's not.
I agree with you.
The ownership is, but there's rental is also. Long-term, like people, full-time residents rent.
Yeah, I'm one.
You know, so.
We have a renter who's been in our building for forty six years.
Yeah. So it's, it's a difficult thing and I, you know, there's been opeds in the paper about how we, you know, whatever, but like. It's sort of like, well, then what's the alternative? Everyone's going to buy houses originally, build tents? Like, you know, we have to figure out how to solve it. And, and, and.
But we have to limit it to long-term rentals, maybe two-year rentals or something. I don't know, something that.
But we have to solve the who's going to manage.
But we have to solve the who's going to manage that.
Right.
Because because, you know, we got a lot of of developers who can build the stuff, but they don't want to be, they don't want to be landlords.
It's not, it's it's really, it's it's really not a sexy job. It really isn't. Yeah, and the amount of money that's in it is, you know, I read an article last week, I I don't remember where it was, but it was. Basically saying how all the billionaires right now aren't buying, they're renting for millionaires. And they're like, it costs too much, we're just renting. I kind of got a kick out of the article. It was an interesting perspective. But yeah, I mean, managing properties is, you know, not. It it, you know, it takes certain people to do it, and I I like you guys said, like the down streets of the world, that's kind of what they do. And, you know, I'm not going to tell you we would never do it. It's just not a part of our plan right now. My my goal would be that you sell to people at a price that they can afford and, you know, you move on to the next. Project or community. Um, I I'd rather not. Do that.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Jim or Jim, either of you guys have any comments or questions?
I don't.
Camilla, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
It's been cool watching those houses go up though on one hundred. So kudos for just making shit happen.
Well, if you guys, and I mean, if any, if you guys want to come take a look, we can show you inside. They're absolutely gorgeous inside. But, you know, I I'd happily offer that to if anybody wanted to take a peek.
What are, all of them, are there some like two bedrooms, some three bedrooms? What are they all?
Those are all through the the the, we have four units there. They're all us, a little over fifteen hundred square feet, three bedroom, two baths. With a, uh, we we opted for crawl spaces because they were duplexes, so there's five foot crawl space with full concrete foundations. One car garage in each one.
What do you anticipate the sal- sale price to be?
Uh, right now, we have those listed. Uh, we have one listed, they're not done, but it's listed at six hundred. But I don't know where it's going to end up. For the record, those are not affordable housing. Like I said, gotta gotta figure out how to make money somewhere.
Yeah, you have to have some of those to have the affordable housing ones, you know?
And we're also, we're building, um, back to your question, making we're we're building a seven hundred and ninety eight hundred square foot home. Um, on Airport Road uh over by Kingsbury. For a woman who's leaving uh recently widowed and leaving Granville. So we set that one last week as well. Like I said, but it's very modest, very small. It um, it's, but it turned out really nice. What's that?
I said, I think I know who that is. That's great. That's great. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good for you.
If there are no more um questions for Aaron, um, thank you very much for joining us. Very informative. And knock wood, uh, everything on Aaron goes well uh in November, and we will um, we'll be in touch for more. Probably more in depth conversations.
And like I said, if there's anything, like Ruth has my email, I I'm I'm happy to. I'm I'm not the most available, but I'm happy to help however I can. Um, if you have questions or whatever. Um, I've just been traveling a lot internationally the last few weeks, so I'm kind of all uh all over the place, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, um, we'll be we'll be in touch, and I'm sure our own thinking is going to evolve too, so we can, we can be more um. To the point as well. So thank you very, very much.
No worries. Have a great day, guys. Evening.
Hey, thanks a lot, Aaron. Get some sleep.
Oh, yeah, football time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um. Dan, do you want?
So now we're on, we're on to newer other business. I'll start with MRVPD if that's okay, because there's some 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 um, some sort of big news. Uh, big unfortunate news in that Sam Robinson um has decided he um. He needs to leave the MRVPD. He's staying at least through November, which is very generous of him, but uh. It's unfortunate, um, but he's got a web development, a business, and he's got a lot of family obligations. Um, that just, you know, it's just too much. So. Um, we're, he did great work for the MRV MRVPD, and we're really sad to have to say goodbye. Um, and that, the upshot of that unfortunately is it's disruptive, I mean. Mo- most importantly, we've lost a really great uh asset and a great person. Um, but also it's really disruptive for the MRVPD. Now we've got to go out and find um. Obviously, try to find, recruit uh a new uh planner, um, and then that planner has to be trained. Um, if there's a way for Sam to overlap and sort of wind down his hours while we wind up. The new hires' hours, that would be ideal, be you know, but we can't hire two, you know, we can't hire an additional person. At the same time, we don't have the budget for that. So anyway, that's one big piece of news. Um, the second sort of unfortunate piece of news involves the neighborhood designation application. Which um Sam had worked on and submitted, and as you may or may not have heard. Was ultimately um couldn't move forward because of the status of our looters. Um, they were like, we're not gonna, sorry, your looters are not done yet. We're not, we're we're not, we're not going to consider it. So that's um. The second piece of sort of unfortunate news.
On that note, was there an actual deadline for that? NDA?
Um, no, but I think what happens is the state statutory framework is changing. I mean, we can resubmit it, but. Um, the rules, the ground rules may be different when we do. So that's there's.
That part I know, but I just didn't know if we couldn't still.
But one eighty one will change, will change that.
Yeah, so we're, so that's, I mean, we will be submitting again once the looter, I mean. Dasha was committed to resubmitting it once the looters go through, but, you know, we tried to get it in, we tried to get it in before the. Before the 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 rules changed and gave it the old college strive, but unfortunately. It didn't work out. Um, the last piece of news I wanted to share, which Camilla's probably familiar with. Is um, and that I sort of clumsily discussed our last meeting. Was the MRVPD has done a white, and I said it actually at the beginning of this meeting, the MRVPD did a white paper. Um, on the benefits of a local options tax. And it should have been, I think, forwarded now to um the various select boards. The MRVPD has no interest in, no, you didn't see it? Oh, I think I think I saw it go to um. I thought it went to Rebecca, but if, but I'll, I'm going to send it around to all our PC members. Uh, and I'm going to quickly, quickly summarize um or quickly restate some of the things I've probably already said. Um, as most of us know, the MRVPD under sort of prior leadership tried to spearhead. A a local options tax initiative. And uh that sort of, that MRV sort of MRVPD top down approach. Or was what was perceived to be a top down approach uh is not something the MRVPD has any interest. In replicating. Um, and therefore, really, the idea of the white paper is to give information to select boards. Particularly as a number of our towns, all of our towns are dealing with very large. Public projects. Um, and unfortunately, the cost of those public projects. Go on property taxes. Unless uh you have an LOT, um, and the white paper will show that if you can. Basically, if you implement an LOT, then a lot of that tax burden. Then shifts on to people who visit, say, visitors to our town who drive on our roads. Um, who benefit from road plowing. And other services, perhaps visitors who stay in a short term rental and. Set off the fire alarm by mistake and our emergency services respond. Um, at any rate, it um transfers. Significantly the cost off of property tax onto sales, meals, uh and room taxes. And and I'm not, I and my guess is that this. You know, in the wake of federal funding being withdrawn from neighboring towns' projects. I would guess that one of our neighboring towns is trying to figure out. Like we all are, how the hell do we pay for this without creaming uh property holders again? And one of the ways is a local options tax. That's what I'll say. I'll share the white paper with you all. Um, it looked like a pretty compelling case to me, but it, you know, but last time it raised some folks' hackles. Um, the one, the last piece, I'll say that, which I said at our last meeting. Is at this point, Montpelier has one, Stowe has one, Waterbury has one. And no one thinks about it, at least. I have never heard anyone said, I'm not going to go to Waterbury to get dinner. I'm not going to go to Montpelier to shop. I'm not going to go to Stowe for whatever reason because of a local option stacks. It it really does not affect. Behavior whatsoever, in my opinion. Um, so. Um, that's my MRVPD update, and I will circulate the white paper.
So the last time, I was on the MRVPD when the last one came up. And the main objection to the last one is that people who were not elected officials were administering the money. And that's why, and that's why it didn't pass. Because um, uh, they were, they were, nobody really um trusted. The administration of the funds that were generated.
Because it would have been the MRVPD, don't you? Yeah.
It just, it just wasn't. So, so hopefully the new white paper has 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 it figured out so that. Somebody who is elected, an elected official is in charge, or officials plural, is in charge of administering. Administering the funds.
I assume that's why Dan is saying they're passing it to the select board in each town as opposed to the MRVPD.
Yeah.
That that's that's exactly right. The MRVPD is not. All the MRVPD did, and I think it is a great piece of work by Joshua and Sam, is to try to quantify the benefits, which. You know, we're between seven hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars a year from their estimate for town. So, I mean, uh, the number has gone up. I mean, it's a, it's a real number, um, and that's. You know, money that's not going on people's property taxes. Um, but but yes, to to answer, and sorry, but to answer your question and not to editorialize. Jim is correct. There was a comp, there was a complicated and murky. Governance structure that was set up, not to be in the last iteration, not to be tricky, but it was confusing. Who's going to run the money? What are they going to do with it? We didn't vote for them. I think Jim's spot on, and Camilla, you're absolutely right. This is a a select board by select board decision. The MRVPD is just providing data. And um, I hope that answers that.
The other thing I'd like to say is it's disappointing to lose Sam, but that position is not a long term position. People use that position. I mean, we've been incredibly lucky to have one person run the MRVPD for as long as we have. The the person who works under Joshua is just a stepping stone position to somebody else. We've had a lot of really, really good people. You know, one of our representatives is actually was was a, was a, worked for Joshua. So. Uh, you know, these, that's, that's, we can't expect those people to last that long in that position. It's it's great, you know, he's been great. I don't take anything away from him. He's been great, like Christine Keeney was great, Dara was great. You know, there's been a lot of really good people in that position, and they move on. That's just part of what that position is.
Echo Jim, Sam, Sam has in fact been the longest serving person in that position at about two and a half years. I think he was. I worked with him most closely. I'm biased. I think he was uniquely um uniquely special, but I agree with Jim. Um, and yeah, we simply can't pay that position. We get really talented people and there's simply no way we can pay them enough to keep them. That's that's the reality.
It's not, it's not so much that either, Dan. It's, that's a great position to be in, to step into another position, which is better. You know, that's that, it's perfect. So, you know, I mean. Though those people don't want necessarily want more money, they want to do something, they want to do more. They want to be more in charge. They don't want to be a sidekick to somebody.
Well, and and doing his own business, because he does have some.
Perfectly understandable, especially with a guy like Sam, because he is great, he's a, he's a, you know.
He's a sharp guy.
Yeah.
Oh, and that lives, the last point on Sam, sorry, before I shut up again, um, is. You know, as 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 um. As an old timer like myself rolls off, it seems to me he would be a great candidate if we could get him to be. On the PC, he would be an ideal candidate. So if you do see him or run into him, do um. I've encouraged him, but please also encourage him to uh to 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 become a PC member.
Yeah, good, great idea.
Good idea. Okay, um, anything, looters, we know that it's getting close. Uh, Granicus, do you have anything on Granicus?
Uh, Rebecca filled out the job description nicely, so that's done. And uh now I don't owe Sam anything. Because Sam's gone.
Yeah, it's too late. It's too late to send Sam the data, Jim. We uh we missed that window.
Yeah, we did. But that means I'll, I I will revisit that out and see what I can do.
Okay.
If the weather turns, I promise to work on it. If the weather stays like it is.
You're out.
It's tough to go inside.
And Jim, you two, tomorrow morning, you and I are meeting Jonathan Erst sprung from Waitsfield to talk about. Uh, Waitsfield Planning Commission to talk about Granicus, as a matter of fact.
Right. Yep.
Interesting, okay.
We done?
Um, and. Go ahead.
Can I make a a public service announcement? I saw all of you got the email from me today. I don't know if you've seen it yet, but. Just reminding us to spread the word about the uh Wednesday morning. Talking with contractors.
Mr. Sam, Mr. Sam did that at the meeting.
One thing that I.
Is it this Wednesday though, or is it?
Day after tomorrow.
Right, but you were saying, that's it tomorrow, right?
That's the twenty fourth.
Yeah, which is day.
Twenty fourth.
Got it, yeah.
One thing that I. I want to stress, and I don't think it was necessarily communicated in that in our public announcements right now, is. Uh, it's not just for contractors who want to bid to be part of the project. This is, I I believe this is a great opportunity for our professionals who have that kind of brain. To come in and actually ask the questions like, you know, somebody who's in the business might be looking at it and going. I could build that for, you know, four million dollars. Why is it seven million dollars? That's what this is. This is to come in and actually talk about those.
Is Aaron still on? No?
At that, yeah, at that, at that, uh, you know.
Yeah.
I think that's.
I mean, I've got a list of builders, but they're all residential.
I hope they show up.
Well, but but it's not, that's what I'm saying. It's not so much about, this is about. Getting people the answers they need before the bond vote, more than it is about, do you want to be part of this, you know, project?
And and getting to the existing garage site.
And getting them to the existing garage site and and getting their questions, getting them reassured. That we're not just blowing a bunch of money here, giving it all away and being irresponsible.
That's a good idea. So, that's good.
Any builders you know, anybody you know who's in the trade who um is kind of like. Members, you know, this is, this is.
Yeah, well, Becky put a thing on Front Porch Forum.
I know, and unfortunately, it, you know, it's 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 very oriented towards, this is your contractors, your opportunity to basically be part of.
If you want to give me the right wording, it's not so, send it, you did to me, and I'll reread it, but um. Because I, I will, I'll send that out to my builders. Okay, the word at the top is the key thing.
Is the thing that says.
Give me the sign.
That was the attention.
No.
Can I, can I ask one question before we, oh, before we sign off?
Sure.
Do we have, you know, and I apologize, I was away for the last um. meeting where we were, the strategy meeting, do we feel like we've made good roads, inroads into the elementary school community? Or is that still sort of, we're not sure? Meaning, meaning parents, PTO, like, this should be important to you, do we have any idea?
I, I, I don't see that represented, I don't know.
No, I mean, uh, I've talked to Jess, well, but she's not even on the PTO anymore, um, no, I think she's, someone else is doing it now, um, I, I'll, I can definitely let them know for the email to them, stuff like that, but like.
I think that's gonna be more oriented towards the two public, two public meetings.
Right.
Public meetings, the beginning of October and the end of October, that's, we want to make sure that they are coming and having those conversations.
Okay, I was just thinking, if someone's dropping off their kids on Wednesday morning, and there's coffee and donuts at the garage, but not, not the right crowd, okay?
That, I don't think that's gonna work.
Not, yeah, probably not, not, not that anybody can't go, but it's not really that oriented that way. Supposed to be more of a, you know, we know the lingo, let's talk to each other kind of thing, one-on-one conversation. What did you ask, oh, it was just a, it was a, it was a scheduled showing, the public.
So we had a bigger public meetings coming up, I got.
Yes.
And I think those, I just wanted to say something about that, which is just talking to people, I feel like there's, there's, um, a number of factors, and I haven't been in any of these meetings, I know y'all, we'll talk about FAQs and different materials, just like more like things to address. One is like just the cost, right, and it's like, smart, you know, it's significant. Um, the second is the, um, the, the impact of traffic.
Yeah.
And that's something that I, I feel like personally, like somebody's asking me about it, and I just hadn't, I didn't know first thing.
Yeah.
Um, but I also didn't know, like, is that like a impact study, or is there like a, ha- has that been addressed in some way, or, because I feel, it feels like a concern.
The trans, I mean, yeah.
Okay, but I guess, let me, let me ask you a question, I don't, I'm not aware of how it's been addressed, so how could I learn about how it has been addressed, if it has? The select board needs to forward Devon's, Devon's note around that she received back from the trans.
That's, didn't I, I'm sorry.
No, but I mean, I mean, we don't need, we need to get that into the village, right?
I sent that exact comment to everybody who on the select board, and, thank you, that's a good point.
Yeah, that note just needs to go out there, and because at the bottom it says, from the, love from the trans at the bottom.
It's a reply from the state about what we've asked for and what their conclusions were.
Yeah, that needs to be public.
Get out there, we just have to figure out, yeah.
This is in regard to the intersection.
Yes, the intersection.
This is not in regard to traffic in the village, traffic in the village is, is a big, is a big other issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, I think making is trying to say.
But does, so where's the traffic memo, I mean, is that, is the traffic memo that the designers have done public? I mean, I hear a lot of reference to the traffic, the traffic memo or the traffic.
It, no, it, actually, I haven't seen anything, it's through Dan Heil, who, you know, who's managing the project, uh, if, they will have to do a study, but they haven't done the study yet. They've just told us that.
Well, they do have a memo that they submitted to us for the town.
They said they submitted.
Yeah, yeah. About, from, about, about traffic from Dan, well, I mean, from DHB, and I will share that with everybody.
That is not about the intersection.
No.
It's about traffic generated over at the, at the.
Traffic back and forth, versus what we have now.
And this, this is a, this is a, uh, uh, a language problem.
Uh, Jim's got a good point here.
Intersection, yeah, and, and people, people think of the intersection as being the same as where Von Brown comes into Route one hundred, and they're different, and that's kind of the problem, is that people want to conflate the two.
Right.
We have a problem with the intersection of Main Street and, and Road Main and Route one hundred. What's, any traffic, increased traffic on the Von Brown entrance, there really is not where the problem is. So, it's, um, we're actually, in fact, we're actually reducing traffic trips through the problem area, so right now, all the trucks from the town garage have to go through that intersection, which is the dangerous one, we'll be reducing there, gonna announce
who they'll be going.
Safer place, a better site. But, but yet, to your point, Megan, how are we communicating that?
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I mean, that is, that's, that's the, that's the nut we have to practice, how do you, how do you, you know, in in less than five sentences, how do you really explain that?
So, so today, we reviewed the, um, mock-up of the draft of a mailer that we're planning to send out at the end of this week, hopefully.
Yeah.
Um, I was just, I spent most of the afternoon trying to, trying to cram a bunch of the pertinent information on, move the other stuff and that kind of thing, and I think if we can figure out a one-liner on that, uh, that would be a really important place to put it, um.
It'll also be some. Yeah, and I was almost asking, like, in anticipation of the larger public meetings, it's just like, this will be on the agenda, so like, you know.
Yes, yeah.
And it sounds like we're already all over it, I've just like, for me, it's like a, um, yeah, I just turned on, I mean, I think it sounds like there's even two different distinct problems within the like intersection issue, so like, you know, totally agree, yeah.
So, so, so really what, what you're highlighting though, is that at those public meetings, we probably ought to have some, we, we ought to have some.
A picture.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
A picture and one chart about how many trucks go here, you know?
Yeah.
Twelve, eleven, ten, and just.
And, and geometry, and that's, that's the thing that this, uh, that letter from the state said, it's the geometry of that intersection, and you can't really change the geometry of that North Main Route one hundred intersection that is the problem. And the geometry of the Long Brown one is not a problem.
Why can't we change the geometry of it?
They, you can't do it easily, is what they're saying, and through the state, they, they don't have the ban, we're not a priority.
I know, I know.
They're tier two, tier two, okay? We're tier two.
You're not even on their list.
Justin, for tier two. Well, be- before we wind up, I'd, I do want, I do love, I still feel Megan sorry, and this is really to you, like, how do we reach the PTO? I don't, you know, how do we, how do we get them? Uh, do you think it would be interesting to have coffee and donuts for them to take a look?
No, I don't think, I, I think that, like, first off, you have a, you have something to send them that tells them, like, here's the deal with the town garage, and they're gonna be like, what do you mean, they make a pile of sand that you drive by, this is da-da-da, like, it's in the Valley Report, it's been in some newspaper articles?
Yeah.
But I'm thinking of like, you know, the, the FAQ for the telecom tower that was so successful, but like, nevertheless, you know, but I think just laying that out is actually quite useful, because like, y'all have it in your head six times over, but.
That's what we're putting on the.
Yeah, so.
The FAQ, taking the FAQs and putting them into a.
And then, you know, Dan, I think, like, yeah, we could, absolutely, you could, you could plan an event, um, maybe the thing to do would be, um, to see when there is going to be an event, and see if you can piggyback on it, um, like a school event or something, but.
Well, what I was thinking though was, you know, when, when, once we've sent out the mailer, um, and we have this October seventh, I think, now, uh, five-thirty meeting, really do a, you know, do a email blast deal, whatever, and have something to go home in the, you know, at school, that says, you know, you received this mailer, this is when the public meeting is, come and have this conversation, come and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure like Heidi was, I mean, we could ask her about putting it in the newsletter, in the PTO, we just need something to send, so I'm, I'm happy to be the foreword as the resident parent of kids in elementary school right now, for, yeah, for the fleeting moment, it feels like.
Thank you very much, um, are we ready to adjourn?
Yep, I moved the adjourn.
A second. Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you, everyone. Dan will feel better.
Thank you.
And, uh, I liked your little kitty.
What's with the strike?
She's cute, isn't she?
Yeah, she is, all right.
Thank you.
All right, catch you later.
Yep, bye now.
She said she asked you, and you said you didn't have any information, so.